Test, test. Test, test.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Blackwood Joint. Actually, welcome to the Blackwood Joint Town Council and Planning Commission Meeting, Special Call Meeting and Goal Planning Session at the Manor. Today is Monday, March the third, twenty twenty-five at five forty-five P M. Mister Stein, would you please call the role, sir?
Uh, Council, Councilman McKendrick. Councilman, Councilwoman Fritt. Councilwoman Page.
Here.
Councilman Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Brock.
Here.
Mayor Griffin.
Here, uh, just let it be known that Councilwoman Fritt will be late. She did report that previously when we set these dates. She'll be here shortly. In her absence, um, I will conduct the pledge and the invocation for this evening. Please join me for the pledge and invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we ask, we thank you for today. We thank you for the weather that seems like spring that let us know that you're still here with us every single day. We ask that you help and lead and place your hands over us as we guide this town into the near future. Watch over each and every one of us. We ask that you continue to pray for our military, foreign and domestic. We ask that you also keep in your prayers, in your thoughts, in your protection our first responders hear that answer the call daily. We ask for a special prayer for those dealing with the wildfires here in South Carolina, whether it's in Myrtle Beach, Pickens, or at our state line up in North Carolina, South Carolina line. Watch over those responders, protect each and every structure. Heavenly Father, and we ask for these things in your name we pray, amen. And thank you, Miss Fritt. Please forgive me, uh, Mister Stein, was notification and the po- and posting of the meeting posted to court in the state?
Yes, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Alrighty. At this time, we're gonna move to discussion item A, which is Town Strategic Planning Session, administered by the Municipal Association of South Carolina. Mister Charlie Burner, our Field Service Manager for this area. Before he gets started, I just wanna make sure that we have some contents, uh, for this afternoon. And I met with Mister Charlie this afternoon just to kinda highlight some things before we get to moving. Um, to the planning commission, I do apologize for that mix-up, um, that was sent out. Um, you guys are valued, we thank you, I think I can safely speak for everyone on council that we, we cherish and we thank each and every one of you for your, uh, volunteerism, uh, to the commission. Uh, so please let it be known that, um, although you might not be up here as it was planned, uh, you do have a voice in this, uh, you're not only commissioners, you're citizens. Uh, please reach out to us and give us, um, your valued input. Yes, sir, thank you, Chairman. So how did we get to this? Twenty twenty, and, um, I'm gonna pass out a document that me and Charlie reviewed, um, this afternoon. Mayor Pro Tem, if you don't mind, take one, pass one. It's a very simple document. In twenty twenty, um, we went through this with the Municipal Association. I can't say it was the first time it was the, yes, yes, I got enough, thank you. And we're gonna make sure you guys in the audience got some, we got plenty. Yes, he got one, yep. So how did we get here in twenty twenty? Um, if my memory serves me correctly, um, we actually went through a goal, strategic plan, goal session, and whichever we called it at that time, to really look back at where we at, where we going, where we wanna go, um, under the Franklin administration. Um, I know myself and, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Brock was part of that. I can't remember if Councilman McKendrick was part of that, um, um, session or not. But where we at today is after looking at this and finally finalizing some of these points in this document. This document is not changed by Mayor Sloan Griffin. This document was taken from, um, what I sent out to council a little while ago. That was basically words on paper, um, that we took, but those words had value. When those words were put on paper, there were never any products, and I'm not pointing fingers at anyone. Uh, we didn't, we did not, uh, finalize it in a such where we had visuals. Um, since then, I've been really working, trying to find a way to really articulate this plan, working with several folks to take those words that was just on paper and to create these, um, words from objectives, create them by objectives, actions, and outcomes. Most importantly, to note that I am still working on some form of a visual product where this is placed online, um, so residents can come in and it's more interactive instead of static data. Um, so technology will allow us to do that. There are several different ways we can do that, uh, but it does take time when, um, um, if we don't go the route of hiring, um, someone to do that or company, uh, to actually make this more interactive. The object of this at the end is to have it where it's measured. So as we complete tasks, when you go through this, you will see where tasks may be completed. This is a fluid document, fluid as water. Um, so nothing is ingrained, but understand that things will change and can change. Our objectives are, uh, plans on council may dictate that this is not applicable anymore. You may want to start over again. Uh, but I know we worked diligently through that process. It wasn't pretty, like you see before you right now. Uh, but to get it here, uh, takes a little bit of, little bit of work. Um, I am gonna go through this page by page just real quick, um, as I, me and Charlie talked about, just so that, um, he can have some ground, uh, grounding as he gets up to talk with us to help us strategize through this thing. This mission statement, um, put before you all, um, was the mission statement collectively, uh, put together by council with some, um, input from citizens. Um, it was very, this was really put together in a probably a marvelous, this way, um, if I can use that word, it was put together in a manner that really, um, I believe, and I think the council at that time believed that, um, this statement spoke to who we are as Blackwood. And I'm just gonna fly through this, and then once we get through it, uh, Mister Charlie will go through and, uh, talk with us, um, one by one, but I'm gonna move fast. The vision statement, the same way. Our core values at that time were outstanding community partner relations, transparency and accountability, inclusion, leadership and stewardship. One of the goals during that time, uh, was the construction of the Veterans Park. You see that there before you, we'll talk about that as we move forward. We have, um, we love our Christmas decorations during the holidays. Um, I know staff really put a lot of detail and hard work into that, uh, process to get us to where we are today. Uh, that was goal number two, is to become a Christmas destination. Goal three was a town center district. We'll talk more about that once we get into the objectives of it. Anization and growth, the industrial park development, monthly, let me see, that's finish. Um, monthly festivals, the cultural civic center, which is formerly known as the Belt of Hambury Gymnasium. Sports venue development, as we all talked about, one in sports fields and, uh, sports complex. Complete streets initiative, as you see some of the enhanced, um, intersections that we all have been advocating for as the penny tax move forward. Environmental stewardship. Creative revenue generation, safety and security, modernizing ordinances, citizen recogniza- recognition, visitor center, Doggo Meadows Park Expansion. And that's the end, ladies and gentlemen, up here on council. Um, those are some of the things that you all may see as we move forward through this. You all have the choice to either keep this, keep some of it, change it. This is fluid, this is our document, this is where we wanna go as a council as a whole, where we believe the town wants to go, um, as a whole together. Um, I do believe wholeheartedly that this was really put together with the town and its citizens, um, at heart at best. And, um, I will leave it up to you all as we move forward, as Mister Charlie, um, gets set up to move through this process. Thank you, Mister Charlie, the floor is yours.
Mister Mayor, is this fine if I stand over here? This is, um, it's great to be here, thank you for the invitation. Um, Charlie Barano, again, with the Municipal Association, uh, of South Carolina. Um, uh, maybe most of you know, maybe you don't, I don't know. I was in Greenwood for almost twenty years, I was their city manager for nine of those years. Uh, for the last six years, I've been serving as a field services manager for the association, and I cover, uh, Richland County. Um, one of the roles that the association has is to, uh, be a facilitator, uh, for, for these type meetings. So, um, uh, already this year, I've probably facilitated nearly ten of these, uh, across, across the state. This is really a, should be a kickoff meeting, right, for your budgeting process? We talk about a, a budget calendar, um, and the goal-setting session should be the initial meeting. It's an opportunity for the five of you to, um, and I, I like to call it almost like a kitchen table, an informal discussion where we talk about the goals, uh, that we want to accomplish for, for this year. The process that the Municipal Association uses, uh, this is not full-blown strategic planning. I don't wanna, you know, we're not gonna put all these charts and graphs, and we try to make this as simple as possible, where we talk about the, the ideas that, the, uh, the goals that you would like to see accomplished. Um, and, and I don't know, uh, Mister Stein, did they get the, the sheet, did, would you, okay. Um, and I don't know if y'all had seen that before, um, but what we then try to do is, is rank those into must-do, should-do, and could-do ideas. Um, we want to keep council, you know, way up here. We can get really sidetracked, a lot of these meetings that I facilitate, it's easy to get sidetracked in the task and objective, so let's try to stay, I mean, up higher, um, in, in the, the goal perspective, um, because ultimately, those tasks and the way that it's carried out are going to be likely managed through either the mayor, um, possibly a new administrator, uh, into the future. We want to keep council, um, up a- as high, uh, as possible, um, tonight. Um, because we haven't had these consistently, the, the first one is always kinda, it's kinda quirky. So this may be quirky, I don't know how else to describe it, clunky. But I promise you, the councils, we've been doing these, um, and an example, um, um, close by, West Columbia. I think we facilitated West Columbia's, uh, goal-setting meeting for now nearly a decade. And it gets, um, you, you don't see it initially, but over time, it's like, oh, 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 I get it, I get it. And so really, y'all are here tonight to plant seeds. I mean, that, that's what this is about, to try to plant, um, seeds, uh, for the future. Um, I like to tell everybody, um, that you, you have to be realistic, right? Um, let's be honest, I mean, Blackwood's a small community, you have limited staffing. Um, so you, you can't do everything, right, y'all know that. Um, I'll go into some of these meetings, um, where, uh, council says, I'll have a council member that'll say, well, I think we need to add this new staff person, this new staff person, and then the next two council members, well, I wanna reduce taxes. It's good, but again, sometimes those are cross-goals, right? We, you can't, um, add new things and subtract revenue. It, it's, that's just really very challenging to do. So again, my point to, we've got to be realistic, um, with what we're going to, uh, accomplish. Um, again, as this is the kickoff to the budgeting process, it allows the staff to, to hear your words and, and try, as we get consensus, try to monetize those words into the budget. And so your vision, your ideas can be, uh, included, um, in, in the budget. Um, and, and the mayor hit the nail on the head. A- a- as much as we can measure these, we can then come back the next year. So hopefully, we would be back January, February next year, and we would have said, these are the things, here's how we're gonna measure it, here's who's assigned to do it, and then we're like, wow, that, you know, got done, that got done. Um, so having these consistently annually, um, is, is helpful. Um, you know, I don't know how you would like for me to bridge the gap between, or bridge how, uh, the, the concepts, the ideas that the mayor presented, and this was probably, uh, the council from, I guess, two years ago. Um, when, when I start these out, I, I, I tell, um, the, the bodies that I'm speaking before, you know, a goal that we want to carry out, it, it can, doesn't have to be a, a capital project. Um, it can be a policy, it can be a meeting, maybe we need to, um, uh, typically in these that I have, uh, the bodies like to, they, we hadn't met with county council in a while. Do we need to have a joint meeting with the county? Do we need to have some relationship with the chamber? It, it can be a, a relationship building, a policy. Certainly, it could be bricks and mortar type stuff. But what you would like to see accomplished does not have to be something tangible. I don't know if I'm explaining that, um, the best that I can, but from that, I mean, did the document that, that, that we gave you from the association typically how we carry those out? Is that what y'all are looking for me to do this evening? Is everybody comfortable with that? So in essence, what we would do is for the next, I don't know, uh, I, I've got another stack of papers over there. I, I'm here for the duration, we can go as long as you want to. But we would just write ideas and, and put those sheets up on the wall, and then try to rank those ideas. Um, and, and, and again, try to give us, you know, um, five to ten, uh, key ideas that, uh, a- again, assuming that, that you have a, a new administr- a new, um, town administrator coming in, working with the mayor, um, we would work to get that, um, put together in a formal document. W- what we typically see is that, uh, a resolution is draft, that drafted, that recaps this meeting, and then council would, at your next meeting or future meeting, adopt that resolution. Again, it just puts in writing what we said, and then that document is used, uh, to help draft, um, the budget, um, during that process. A- any questions that anybody may have of me? And I know that this is gonna be difficult, but... But that may be the, well, we'll just, we may have to, yeah, may have to stand up, so... So with that, I don't... Alright, who wants to go first? I, I prefer in order, I mean, it just, for either we go left to right or right to left, however y'all... And again, we're gonna go until y'all get tired, you just say, I don't have anymore. Sure. And I'm gonna ask for clarification. Is that better communication here, better communication broader? Help me to make sure I'm clear. Okay? Oh, and I apologize, ye- yes, Mister Mayor, hold on, I should've made clarification. So yes, I'm, I'm fine if we have some discussion, but I wanna be clear, what we don't wanna do, um, I, I see this sometimes, when, if somebody, remember, each, each of you, that's your turn, your turn to say something. So don't say, well, we tried that two years ago and it didn't work. Just let that individual have the opportunity. But if there's something that another individual can add to maybe better state that idea or improve upon it, I don't, that's fine. So Mister Mayor.
Thank you for that, um, clarification. I just was wondering, when I look at this, 'cause I will go back and try to update these documents as quickly as possible, so... Are you looking, are you... I guess when I look at that, and I know you don't wanna get into the objectives and, and all of that, but are you just saying in general, like, participation? Oh, okay, I got you. It, it, I, I got you, that's, that's just like, um, county council gets, then they dock it, okay, that's cool.
And probably vice versa.
Vice versa, absolutely.
Okay? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Go right ahead. Thank you. Okay. And so I assume we see, I know y'all have got a robust website, your social media, are you looking for anything above and beyond that? Or just consistent?
Well, certainly, uh, continue with what we're doing, but I also think that there's this, um, you know, a small percentage of people who are actually engaged, so I don't necessarily know how we do that.
Right, I understand.
Can't be the same percentage of people engaged, we have to grow that.
Right. And that your, I, I, I facilitated, uh, most recently, I think it was Folly Beach, one of the top things is, is these, when my, my brain is going, I just heard this, I just heard this. So that is common throughout government to try to improve engagement. Yes, ma'am. Did you have further thoughts, or?
Well, I'm thinking, you know, the word transparency likes to be put out there, but I think it should be transparent, like, you know, within the entire council, like the council having more of a voice, real transparency.
Right. And, and I too apologize in advance, uh, y'all may, uh, uh, my writing skills and, and grammar are not... So I, I thought you might be looking, how can I read that, so... Yes, ma'am, uh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I had one question, um, with regards to these notes that you're taking. Do you typically take them back to your office and put it, put something together for, and...
There's no right or wrong answer to that, everybody does it a little differently. What I will do is I, uh, make a PDF of all the, um, all the notes, and then I formalize, type them up. Um, however, I go back to each community and tell them that, uh, this is your document, not mine. And so I strongly advise, you know, the word choice to be changed, the... So typically, it would be a, the staff person that is updating that, and then bring it, sending a draft to the council, are you comfortable with this?
Okay, gotcha. And then also, is this our opportunity to add to what items have already been listed?
Yeah, it's a great question, when you're, when you're wanting to, 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 to try to blend something that you already have. Um, you know, I would make statements, something along the lines, I want to reemphasize this item that was listed in the previous document, that we, you know, really need to focus on that.
Okay, alright, um, so as far as a new item, um, it would be, uh, I'm gonna be repetitive in the word, um, engagement, but it would be in c- community outreach and engagement, and this would be more so of, um, having, um, having planned events throughout the year. Um, it can be, to your point, um, as, as small as a shred day, you know, or, um, disposal of pharmaceutical, um, items in a household. Just being supportive of the neighbors, and so that's where I, I would lean in on the whole community, um, engagement piece, outreach, if you wanna use a different term. Um, but it would be planned in the sense of you start your year with, on a quarterly basis, going ahead and having those events already planned out for the, for the year. However many that needs to be. And then I would say with regards to item number one, with better communication, I think that should also be, um, outside with our, um, outside of our, of our town, in the sense of having, um, relations with other towns, such as, um, Winsboro and West Columbia, um, also with other governing bodies, such as, um, you know, Richland County, um, Fairfield, just having a pulse and, and having that. And I do know the C O G is there, but it seems as though there's been multiple, um, you know, um, meetings where they, they just didn't have meetings for, for whatever reasons or whatnot, but...
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Charlie. Any, any and every idea that, that this body proposes can be good, can be bad, could be neutral. But at the end of the day, you, you... But at the end of the day, you, you alluded to something when you're, in your opening salvo, that Blythewood is a small community with limited staff. Well, to execute on probably most of these goals, we've got to have some source of funding. Right now, Blythewood doesn't have a money problem. We've got a few other problems, but money's not one of them, which is probably somewhere the opposite of a lot of other municipalities. So, we have to create new and expand existing revenue sources.
So, new, new revenue? Okay.
Create new and expand existing.
And you're, um, looking at everything broadly there?
Absolutely.
'Cause I, correct me if I'm wrong, aren't, y'all have no property tax, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, so...
We have no reoccurring, reoccurring stream of revenue.
Right.
Some would argue that we do. I would actually say that we do not.
Right.
Nope. I disagree with that. A business packs up, moves outside of the town, it's gone. It's not, you, you can't bank on any revenue source that we currently get. You could say, "Oh, we get hospitality tax, oh, we get accommodations," not if everybody packs up and leave. Now, is that realistic? No, it's, it's not realistic. But could it happen? Well, yeah.
But y'all have local, there's local option sales tax in Richland, right?
Yeah, we get a little bit of that, but that, that doesn't, that wouldn't even fund the operating costs.
Right.
So, we, we have to look, and I know that's one of the items in, in this packet, was talking about revenue sources and revenue growth. We have been lucky, but...
Well, and y'all probably know that the association is, um, working a, a bill with the, the General Assembly to try to, um, get the Zero Millage Bill moving forward. There's fifty-nine
Yeah.
municipalities in the state that currently don't have a property tax. It's not that we're lobbying for a property tax, we're simply lobbying for your home rule right to add one if you choose.
Which, right now, that right doesn't exist.
Right.
That would just open the door to allow...
Well, it's, it's an opinion that the right, you know, the Attorney General has issued an opinion that they don't believe you can do it. Um, but, so, we're, we're trying. We're hopeful that this could be the year that we can get it through. This is a non-election year from the state perspective, and so, the, the challenge is, if we can't get it through this year, next year is an election year, and we don't get much done in election years, I'm just being honest. So, we'll see.
Is the association working with any of those fifty-nine municipalities in town?
We, we have been communicating with all of them, um, and, and strategizing the House and Senate members, but again, it, there is, the, the strategy that our team goes through for, for all the things that they're working on from, and y'all have heard some of the terms, you know, the liquor liability issue to the, the chess game they're playing every day is, I, I don't sit in on those meetings, so... There's a reason I don't. But, so, again, focusing on new, new revenue sources for the town. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Charlie. I don't know why my mic, it normally picks up right here, but not tonight. So, for me, um, I'm probably like, I'm torn between a couple right now. I'm still on the sports, improving ours' access to recreation in the town. And that's a broad statement, because it's not just one, um, sports. It's inclusive of all, uh, sports. When I look at it and think about a sports complex, it's a little bit of everything in the sports complex. I'll be greedy here and add annexation.
Well, that's, that's a separate one, so, we want this to be, and maybe with the, the access to recreation, I mean, do, and I hate to always start there, but is there a plan? Do we have a master plan for recreation?
For the town?
For the town.
I would say no.
And so, again, if you were asking me from an outsider, and, and you were wanting to look at recreation needs, I would want to, to start with some type of a master plan. The process would maybe include some community engagement.
We, yes, we, we did, I believe, the planning commission, when Councilman McKendrick was there, did some surveys that picked up on, on a lot of those needs, but to go back and say that we pulled that data and created separate documents and say, you know, "Blythewood's future recreation plan," no. We talked about, you know, sports complex. We looked at the new property, the McLean property. We had this public input sessions for that property there. We do have a plan for it, but it's not a sports complex type of plan for that park. It kept a lot of the green space, nature trails, included playgrounds, splash pads of that sort, but not somewhere where you have baseball fields, football, um, you know, those type of fields in it.
Just tying back to the funding question.
And that's, that's where it would go back to, is, is creating.
We've got to have the plan with some maybe shovel-ready ideas in it, because, you know, you, you then take those things, and you can either take it to a delegation member, a grant all of a sudden pops up, and we can then plug that grant into the map, but without a, a holistic vision, um, that kinda gives us marching orders. Go ahead, I don't...
Charlie, I'm gonna ping to Ms. Fripp as well, and, uh, ask her to pick up her microphone, but, 'cause I'm gonna talk to her. While this is a, a novel idea, where does this, how do we incorporate Richland County Recreation? Because that is the county-wide mandate to provide access to recreation for all citizens, and while we have our little fiefdom here in Blythewood, how do you, how do you bridge that gap? Because if you're, if you're discussing collaborating with the eight-hundred-pound gorilla, they've got the source, they've got the funding, they've, they've got a lot of the things that you would need to have this. So, I mean, wouldn't, it wouldn't a kind of a, a sub, subpoint of that to be, to start at Richland County Recreation, to see what synergies and, and collaboration can occur?
Yep.
And Ms. Fripp worked for them for many moons.
And so, as far as Recreation Commission, the only thing I can say is, you know, it just have, it would need to be a conversation had. I mean, if they've got, um, I mean, they can only do so much in terms of the facilities that they actually already have in Blythewood, um, you know, they've got their own sports complex. Um, but, you know, one thing that they do have is they have a fundraising arm, which we have, and I think that if we were to build that up, like, they have theirs, I used to run their fundraising arm as well. If we build that up, then I think that's a revenue source, so that we can look to expand recreation, as long as we're on the flip side, you know, increasing revenue and revenue sources. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but it's just a conversation that, that needs to be had.
They've been doing it for how long?
Oh, the Recreation Commission?
Yeah. How long has it been around?
Almost eighty-something years now.
And we, and we haven't done a single thing, so, it would seem like it'd be a good place to start.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I put advocacy with the county, so, certainly.
Charlie, I'll piggyback on that one. When we talk about a master plan, as a council, we've already, we've always talked about a master plan as it pertained to Doco Park, the property you're in, or the McLean property, or other various pieces of property that we may be looking to acquire. I think it would be helpful if we took a step back, or a higher level, and did a master, a town master plan that encompasses infrastructure for roads, I mean, scouts under development. I mean, it's gonna be here before we know it, really will be. So, and when I say master plan, I'm talking holistically. Infrastructure, what is our master plan for infrastructure? What is our master plan for McNulty and Creech, as those come online? What is our master plan for housing within the town limits, both by production-built communities and affordable housing for the nine thousand employees that are gonna be within a fifteen-mile radius? What is our plan for overall recreation space? Is that open space, athletic fields? What is our master plan for public-private partnerships, property acquisitions, and annexation? So, that, those were, as I looked at this earlier today, those were the pieces that I put in a, a holistic master plan for the town. Now, we, we won't hit all of the, we won't hit all those gates. And many of those, as we drill down, involve far more than the five of us. When we look at just road infrastructure, that involves federal money, SEDOT money, tax money. But I think that would benefit the town as a whole. And again, funding would be an issue for this, 'cause that would not be a cheap endeavor, but I, I think it would be helpful.
And Charlie, I would like to ask Councilman McKendrick, so you're talking, you mentioned affordable housing, within the town of, within the town limits of Blythewood, or you're thinking Blythewood kinda as a whole?
I, I would think, I would think as far as that holistic plan goes, where the council has control is obviously within town limits, where we can set the pace for that. But I think if we knew where affordable housing was planned, even just outside the town limits, where we get word of that from a zoning sign that goes up, and, and which goes back to Richland County Council.
Right.
Uh, this council doesn't necessarily get word of that upfront. We pass the same signs as the rest of the citizens.
Right.
So, just more of a holistic plan as we, and we've just adopted a, a land use ordinance. So, it would dovetail with that nicely. I, I just think that should be a high priority for us as a council. A lot of them.
Are we gonna use the screen tonight? Do you know? Can the screen go up? That's fine. That's fine. It's fine. It's not a big deal.
It encompasses a lot of them.
Well, no, I was just saying to, uh, kinda talking amongst ourselves, that that holistic, the holistic master plan, um, with the exception of adding revenue to it, that would really kinda encompass everybody from recre, does that say rec?
It does, recreation.
Housing, I don't know that we've mentioned any affordable housing. I don't know, uh, where that would be, but I think if you added revenue to that, that would basically kinda cover everything that we've mentioned so far.
It would be...
I would add business recruitment and development.
It would be interesting to know, and Ms. Mayor, I don't know if we have the tools to do this, we may be able to do it through the Municipal Association, but it would be interesting to know, within the town limits of Blythewood, as well as these new developments that the county is approving just outside town limits, what is the average home price there?
You should be able to get that data.
That, that would be interesting for the town to take a look at, because wh- when we're talking about the, and this is just drilling down that holistic, when we're talking about the, the influx of people that are getting ready to hit just outside the town limits, as well as within the town limits, housing's a, a tough nut to crack when we're looking for both white collar and blue collar, but the majority of these are gonna be blue collar workers that are working at scout and, and the second-tier suppliers for scout. That's what I'm talking about when I'm talking about affordable housing. So, I would like to know, and of course, we can request it from Municipal Association, what, what is that average home on the market? I know when we did the...
Yeah, now, we wouldn't have that data, but, but certainly, you're, you're gonna be working with a consultant. You may have had some of that data come out of your comp plan process.
Yeah, we did, actually did.
That, that data's there.
Yes. So, to that point, if I may, um, we can get that data from Richland County. When we had, um, our, and we, we had a economic development person on staff, and y'all know who that was, we used to get a lot of that data points, not only from the housing market price points, but from the businesses as well, so that data was pretty, pretty available to us. So, we just have to go back and revisit that. We do have MOAs with the county for GIS support, so GIS can highlight a lot of these areas. So, if you got an area that you're looking at, I'm just gonna use like Mount Valley Road, that area, if you highlight it, you know, and it was homes there, it can give you that query outside of what you normally can do on the website yourself, but just a GIS tick. And we do have, um, an agreement on deck for us with our own GIS data. We're not ready to present that yet, but that's already in the works, so that it will be on our website, and we have access to our own GIS portal, and we'll be able to get a lot of that real time. Not necessarily right when you build a house, but as of data, a whole lot quicker.
Yeah, I think that's helpful.
Yes.
I think that I would just, it seems like I would just be piggybacking off of, um, that, uh, what is it? I can't see, my eyesight. Holistic, um, the holistic master plan, like I said, just, um, I guess as we continue to bring out, you know, our ideas, I'm surprised infrastructure wasn't almost first on, it wasn't mine, but it was, you know, I'm surprised that wasn't first on everybody's, 'cause it just seems like that is just something that's...
Just from an outsider, I mean, the, the, I would agree, but the, the challenge that y'all are faced with, you don't control that much. I mean, let's be honest, I mean, the DOT controls the roads, your water is provided by your, y'all...
Two different.
Yeah, so...
City of Columbia and Winsboro.
All, all you can do is advocate to those entities the best you can.
And then, you, you even drill down on that. It's public services. I mean, our police force, our emergency services, they're, they're, they're all intergovernmental agreements, so we have very little control over
Right.
improving any of those outside of...
But I, but, well, yes, but, but you communicate, you've got to advocate to those entities and have two-way communication, um, to be in, to ensure that you're trying to get as much as what you want.
Right.
And again, you're welcome to say bypass, I, I just really can't...
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, because it seems like everything that I would think of has already been mentioned. I mean, you know, as we keep talking, I can add on to it, but, um...
Again, and, don't, just, some people do, just, just, so, it, it's fine to throw things out so that your four other council members know your ideas, but at the same time, I use the word realistic and...
Right.
So, don't just...
Right.
If you don't have anything else, that's fine.
Yeah, there's, I think this right here would be aggressive. You're talking one year.
The, the one, the one statement, that the holistic would be aggressive.
Exactly. So, yeah, just to keep adding things. I don't have anything additional, just to keep adding.
Sure. Ms. Page? Ms. Page?
Okay, so, um, I do like smaller goals, um, I feel like maybe those would be more accomplishable, um, or more telling or seeing, so I would like, um, for us to have, and not a big box chain, but a, um, a decent sit-down table restaurant, love the restaurants that we do have, love the businesses, but, um, it would be nice to have, um, some more, so being able to recruit the type of restaurants, um, or, you know, uh, services that our community would like to have.
Right. And I, and I just have to ask, have, do we, do we have a current market assessment? Has a market assessment been done to know what our numbers are today?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so that would probably, you know, there where I would, you know, start. Yeah, I, I tell people the story about Greenwood, I could have been, um, not, not that Olive Garden is everybody's dream restaurant, it's, but it gets attention, right? And so, being the city manager, that was all I ever heard, was Olive Garden, but we had dug into the numbers, and we were never going to get an Olive Garden. So we don't want you focused on things that are by the numbers, why, but if we, if we can get our numbers, and we know how much leakage, or how much is, you know, coming in, we can then take those numbers and then recruit, again, y'all may be partnering with somebody else, I, I don't know how you handle your recruitment, whether you, you use a chamber, you're working with Richland County, or may even have to partner with a third-party consultant, there are other firms that you can engage, the, the association has partnered with one time with Retail Coach, um, other communities use retail strategies, but, without knowing the numbers, uh, that's, that's your starting point. But, but I'm gonna put, I, I put retail recruitment restaurant, so. Councilman Brock?
Thank you, Charlie. Um, I, I'm kinda in the same boat as Councilwoman Fripp, I, I'm of the opinion, if we even accomplish a quarter of this, I think that's fantastic, um, given our limited revenue streams and, and the fact that about ninety-five percent of the town is already developed and built out, you know, to, to a lot of these, um, to, to, to really accomplish a lot of these goals, we're gonna have to add additional land, so I mean, if you wanted to throw annexation up there, possibly, as, as one, but, um, outside of that, I'm, I just don't think there's really a whole lot more to add. But, I will say this, we've been talking about annexations for the entire time I've been on council, and I can only think of one parcel that's been annexed into the town, so I question whether or not that's actually attainable.
I always remind folks, the annexation is a complex term, complex process, and so, again, just like the, uh, restaurant retail recruitment, um, we've gotta start with the base, and so if, if annexation is something that you want to, um, focus on, I would first start with a training session for you, maybe the planning commission as well, to, to understand the intricacies of, of annexation. I would just stop, it is, it is complicated.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And right now, we're, right now, the only thing, I say the only thing, we would be gaining acreage within the town limit, we're not gaining revenue.
Right.
So, that, that's in some ways a hard pill to-
With, with every annexation, you're gonna gain some revenue, you may not gain property tax, but don't forget, I mean, there, there are franchise fees, there's insurance, business licenses, uh, everybody that you bring in is paying something where there's a fee attached to it that the town would then-
Yeah.
So there is, there is revenue.
So, um, Mayor Pro-Town Brock took my annexation, but, um, I think annexation, to his point, a lot of times we, a lot of us that have been around for a little bit, whether it's from the planning commission to now, we have always heard annexation. A lot of us ran on that notion of annexation, annexing, um, but, and, and we do have something to the point of annexation that I think that really helps us in the town, we do have an approved policy and manual on how to really annex, in, in the form of understanding the laws behind annexation, that's something that was done under the last administration. I remember, I think it was myself and Mayor Pro-Town Brock, that really brought that document to the forefront, um, and we, we leveraged, um, the municipal association on their guidance, on helping us understand and know what municipality to go to in the state, and I believe that was done through Bluffton.
Bluffton has a manual.
They have the, they had, at that time, and it could be different now, but they had one of the best, um, that the association lent to us, and basically what we'd done was, we looked at it, we made contacts with, um, with the town there to talk about it and, um, get their blessing, but we did use that manual, um, because it was jammed up, it, it had very little, uh, things that we needed to change, it had all the documents and application to it that tells you what to fill out, you know, how to go through that process of annexation, whether it's through somebody coming in here petitioning council to have their property annexed, or us looking at, um, the election process, um, trying to accomplish zip code. So I think there's a lot of things that come with the annex, uh, annexation piece, to include, you know, do we grow on council? Does, would that add more members, um, to the council? Will we go to districts if you annex the entire zip code? So, there's a lot of things that, that manual really talks about, and it's available on our website as well, um, on the doc. But, yeah, he, I'm gonna pass because he took that one, but I think that's a real big one, um, and it's also another ticketed item that could be very costly, um, is, is time-consuming, but it could cost, um, because that could require some form of legal, um, to, um, accomplish that. We do have doughnuts in the town, um, so doughnuts of these areas, just for the public that, um, surrounded by the town limit, um, that you drive through the town limit, but two or three houses or more may not be part of the town limit, so I know there's a bill at the state, um, talking about doughnuts as well, and how to accomplish that. So I think a lot of that to, um, relying on our relationships at the state house, um, to, to advocate for some of those bills, uh, would be probably one of those things too.
Uh, the last one that I would have, that I would add, and I could add it under F, the holistic master plan, would be a town beautification plan, whether that, I mean, Blackwood was always known as the McDonald's exit, right before you got to Columbia-
Right.
Or a gas stop, but I would like to see, we're, we're getting ready now to have three defined Blackwood exits, so if we can have some continuity from our exits-
I'm gonna use the term gateway too, because I think that-
Gateway, yeah, and, and have continuity exit to exit.
Right.
And a lot of that's gonna be, I mean, I'm sure scout will set the tone for a lot of that with what they do at their exit, but to make no doubt in anybody's mind, when you hit these three exits, that's Blackwood, and we'll obviously book in scout drive, but focused on the interstate, focused on, uh, being an attractive exit as, as you look at a stop either heading into or heading out of Columbia.
I would, I agree with that, Councilwoman Rich, um, with regards to when you get to Chester, they have a nice, well-lit sign, even Lexington, nice, well-lit sign, um, even, um, the lights, if you even get off at the exit off of, um, sixty-five, you can see the nice, um, tall, it's well lit, ours is not lit, um, so I would say that's definitely, and, and dot, dot, dot would be the, um, the connection of our pedestrians, we, you're starting to see school kids walk across, you know, um, Blackwood Road, um, going to different restaurants, and so, you know, just being able to be a more walkable, um, town, um, that would be part of that, as well as the arts. Um, at the, the conference for the municipalities last year, it was really neat to see some of the artwork, street artwork, um, at like an intersection, just something to liven up, you know, while we may not have buildings to display art, we do have roads, um, or, you know, that could be only for a period of time or whatnot, but-
Yeah.
I think that pretty much covers it.
Sure. I'm not gonna step my toe, but I will, because I would do you wrong if, if, but if, if I was to have a goal for you for the next six months to a year, if I was in, looking from the outsider and seeing what I see on a daily basis, I really think, you know, let's be honest, the focus on our next administrator, I would think, you know, you're probably going to have to get a framework, I think you have an executive session after that, but a lot of energy needs to be put there, um, for the next few months, six months, we, we need a stable administrator, because let's, let's be honest, like, again, Mr. Mayor, county, y'all may, you gotta have a stable person to, to achieve these things.
And, and to that point too, um, going through this process, looking for an administrator, a lot of these things, if it can be accomplished, really takes multiple hands to, to get to that point, it takes some specialized, um, person or persons to really get to that plan, and we can put these plans together, and I do agree, um, that the holistic master plan is probably, not speaking for the group, but probably would be one of my number-one rankings, is to go through and actually have a guiding document moving forward, that would take a lot of, that'll, that'll be a costly task, um, to get that done. Uh, some of those things in that we could get done, uh, the beautification projects can get done, but that will require us hiring additional staff to keep up with all of these gateways coming in, um, the gateways, you know, that's, that's part of the beautification coming in, and, um, that, those are great ideas, but it takes hands, so I think a lot of it is really sitting down, looking at these master plans, and being honest with ourselves, where we at?
I will add maintenance, so.
You know, where we wanna go, because a lot of these things will require a tremendous amount of maintenance and upkeep too. But, um, before you, before we move on, I will add one more thing to that I on the board, and, um, I think it's something that Blackwood, that we have pride ourselves on, and, and I know some would look at it and say scout cleared it out, but the environmental aspects of the community, preserving as much green space as possible, um, in this community. I know moving forward, when we have talked with, um, some of the developers, we have been encouraging them to, um, include as much green space in their, uh, master plan as possible, um, to those plans, knowing that we can't just stop any residential growth, but, you know, can you encompass parks and walking trails and those aspects into your community, so, just, just being conscious of our, uh, preservation of the environment. And I have to add streams and rivers and all of those things into it too, and wetlands, probably part of that holistic plan probably should include wetland studies as well, uh, because we are seeing with the rains now, a lot of shifting in a lot of the wetlands, um, on the west side of Blackwood.
And Charlie, the hard, um, well, we got, that would be a lot of work, what's up on that wall, if we, if we got half of that done, we, we'd work really well.
Yeah.
But I think one of the big things that we as a council need to tackle, and you alluded to it when we talk about the administrator's position, because we've struggled there. Uh, I think we've struggled there because Blackwood used to be a, a perfect-sized steppingstone for somebody building a career in administration, so, so we were a stop along the way, uh, is why we haven't held an administrator, in my opinion, for very long.
There's value in that.
And now, with the changing climate, with the development, both with scout and, and second-tier suppliers, I think as a council, we need to talk about forms of governance. Is the mayor council form of government the best route for us right now, or should we look at more of a manager council form of government? And what are the pros and cons of both? Um, and have a healthy discussion for, what does it look, because it's not necessarily for the five of us, it, it's for councils in ten years, at, at some point, you have to decide, is your town big enough to look at your form of government? I, I think that would be a big one for me as well.
The, the association's role in the forms of government, all three forms work fine, um, it's, it's the people that, um, make it work. Now, what role, we can help you if you want us to, uh, we do provide form of government training, and so can come in and give you an overview of all the forms of government and the different roles, um, the, the way that you, um, since the question was asked, the only way to change, there's two methods, uh, either the citizens present a petition for a form of government change, or you adopt an ordinance for the form of government change that calls for a referendum, either way, there's gotta be a referendum. Um, typically in that, uh, ordinance is an outline of the timing, typically you would see a six-month pause if it were to pass, and it would go in, 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 into effect after six months. Um, the last change, um, that we had was over in Terrell, they went from the mayor council form, which is what you have, to the, the manager form, uh, they were, I think now we have thirty-four, um, cities and towns that are under the manager form, but, again, that's, we, we don't argue or try to rally around one or the other, that's your call. We will help you to provide education, but beyond that.
So, uh, Mr. Charlie, I think, um, maybe at our second budget workshop, and that one shouldn't be too long, maybe by the time we get to the second one, um, I'll check the polls of council, let's see if that's something that everybody wants to, if you guys will be willing to come out and do that, doing the workshop.
Something like that can be scheduled at a moment's notice, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, I, your budget process is challenging enough, been there, done it, uh, I, so, you know, don't, we'll, we'll be here whenever.
All right. I, I think, just looking around this room, the, the table here, I see faces out there looking at all these, um, tasks, objectives, tasks that's up here on the wall that gotta be put into objectives and outcomes, task and outcomes, they gotta be developed, um, at some point, like the document on this here, um, I would, before, you know, giving it to you to close, or, and whatever, you know, pieces of information you need to give us for guidance moving forward, um, I would just ask council, as we get these back, um, knowing that where some of our priorities are, and that's, you know, trying to find an administrator, um, that's gonna be a, a task there, and once we get that back from
I, I didn't add that as a separate one, is that something that I should add as a separate?
I thi, I, I think it's gonna take us, I think it's gonna take us a little bit to find an administrator, I don't think that's gonna be a quick overnight process, and, and I don't, I hope it's not a quick overnight process, I think we do need to slow down and, and take our time in that. I think we do need to slow down and, and take our time in that um process. So that might be one that needs to be added to that last, um, to that last item, sir. But while Charlie is doing that, I just ask for patience of the council um as we deal with the transition, um, to get documents out um to you all um in as fast as a manner as possible. Uh, to get these back out once we get it from Charlie, when we get it from Charlie, um, I know you have all our email.
Yeah, do you want to rank these in any way? I mean, it.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, let's rank them.
Okay. Typically, again, it, no, there's, this is a simple process, it's not perfect. But the way that we go about ranking them, uh, we ask you to give, give, give your top three. And so your top goal, I will put three marks on it, three votes. Your second goal, I'll put two marks. Your next goal, I'll put one mark, and, and that, and then we add up scores quickly, and then we know what your top goals are. So, do y'all need a second to, to look at it, or?
And I'm gonna look at the faces of council, I think one of the major.
Y'all need me to read them again, so?
I, I think you can go straight to F for number one, for the whole list of master plan.
Whoever wants to go first with their top three, in, in order, one, two, three.
I agree with that.
I'll go first.
I would do a holistic master plan, would get three marks for me.
Okay.
Forms of government would get three marks for me.
Well, two.
Two. And then probably, it was up there where to go.
What?
Finance.
Fi- uh, new revenue?
New revenue streams.
Okay.
So, I would, oh. At some point, so revenue streams would be.
Your top?
My top.
Okay.
Revenue stream. Holistic form of government.
Holistic second or form of government, I'm sorry.
Holistic would be second.
Okay.
Form of government.
Okay. All right. Ms. Page?
So, better communication will be number one for me.
Yep.
Um, and then I would say number um C, which would be the planned community engagement outreach. Down at the bottom under civic engagement, that would be number two.
Okay.
I'm going for shorter terms.
That's all right.
And then um the recruiting of um retail and restaurant.
Okay.
Market assessment, that seems to be an easier task.
Mr. Rock?
I mean, this should, this should come as no surprise to anybody, but it starts, it starts and ends with, with D. So, that gets three marks, because if you don't have any money, you're not going anywhere. Uh, F would get two marks. And I'm gonna throw a little bit of a curve ball and give my last mark to annexation.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
So, I'm gonna give three marks to, I'm gonna go to holistic master plan, three marks. Anexation, two marks. Retail, uh, and new revenue gonna win, but go to, um, retail.
Retail?
I'm torn between those two, but it's gonna win. It's, it go hand.
They go hand, they do.
It's gonna win.
So, the top goal is this holistic master plan?
Charlie, I'm trying to choose a votes here, are you telling me votes?
Oh, uh, it got ten? And then, uh, the new revenue looks like it would be second. And we're gonna have some ties, and I'm not gonna, we're not gonna break the ties, but looks like we're gonna have a bunch of ties with three, so, and that's fine. So, one, two, we'll add all these.
H, H had three?
Sir?
Correct.
Yes, they had three. And so, again, we would remove those that have the numbers. And so all we've got left now for our next tier of goals um would be, uh, and again, you would give me three votes for your top one, two, one. Civic engagement, um transparency, uh, and the consistent planned events would still be there. Access to recreation, uh, retail recruitment and restaurant, preservation of green space, town administrator stability and search.
They were doing the same thing?
Same thing.
Um, county administrator stability and search? Civic engagement be. Access to recreation.
So, okay, the town adminis- the town administrator.
Okay.
Civic engagement, that loops up all of them. Did I see retail or what?
Retail's still here.
In retail.
Okay, retail, restaurant, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Page?
So, the town administrator's already in play, but it's not my number one, because it's already in play.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Um, that's why, yeah. Um, so I still go with easy, um, where's your quickest wins, and I think consistent planned events.
Okay.
Um, civic engagement, those are easy wins, and then um the, the retail and restaurant.
Okay. Mr. Rock?
I'm trying to think why town administrator was placed up there. That's not a goal, it, it's, it's a requirement. I mean, it's not even, oh, this is something we'd like to do. It is something I believe we statutorily have to do. So, I, I, I don't even think that should even.
No, I mean, you can operate without one.
It's not, I don't think so.
Yeah.
No, I, I don't even think it's, yeah, so, I, I don't, I don't even consider that, um, because we've got to do it. Retail recruitment would be number one. Civic engagement number two. And. Recreation gets the.
Recreation.
Yeah, gets the last tick.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, I'm going with recreation, retail, and engagement.
Okay. All right, so, I think we've got engagement, the restaurant, retail, and the recreation admin, no, I guess it would go to admin, admin. And so all we've got left is, uh, the, and we can add these just at the end, we don't have to vote again, but the consistent planned events, uh, preservation of green space, and that's it. So now I'll get this um typed up, put together, and get it back to you.
Mr. Charlie, thank you so much, sir, uh, for coming in and facilitating this um strategic goal session for us. Um, this is something that we are buying to, by ordinance, um, to get done within the first quarter of every year or so. Um, henceforth, moving forward, um, you'll be invited back here. We'll probably set up some standing date with you um for the next one coming up. But we definitely appreciate that, we look forward to the documents coming back. I would ask that you, when you send that back, um, send it to all of us um for this document, so we can have it at the same time. Um, and then we will reconvene uh to discuss um that document in its totality uh, once we get it nice and um printed up, unless you wanna do this. But, um, but.
Uh, C, Barron O, B as in boy, A-R-R-I-N-E-A-U. B-A-R-R-I-N-E-A-U at M-A-S-C dot S-C.
M-A-S-C dot S-C?
Yes, sir. Okay, great, thank you.
Again, appreciate you again, um, safe travels home, uh, we look forward to seeing that document soon. Um, council, any other further discussion on this discussion item presented to you tonight? Thank you, hearing none. Um, before we go to executive session, um, I know we have members of the planning commission here. I know this is not part of the agenda, but I do wanna uh pause for a mo- for a moment to give those members of the commission opportunity to um approach the mic if they wish to uh speak on anything that they have seen in our discussion um this afternoon. Chairman Mosley, thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council.
Yes, sir.
Um, during the annexation component, there was a one recommendation for education and uh studying up on municipal uh situations so that we can move forward. Uh, as chair of the planning commission, in situations where we don't necessarily have an agenda, uh, we'd like to take those opportunities to use those for workshops where we do study some of the uh uh municipal videos and information that's out there. Uh, at one point in time, we were required to maintain a certain degree of continuing education, and it was documented and tracked. But having a workshop that the public is able to come sit at keeps the community informed, and it ensures that uh your commissioners are all receiving that same education. We could watch an hour, hour and a half video, compare our notes, and bring that back to uh impact our community. That's all I have to say, unless y'all have any questions for me.
Thank you, sir, and I know we talked about moving forward with some of the educational pieces. Um, so whatever support you need from myself and staff, uh, just let us know, but that is important. And I do like the way that you explained it, uh, to have it here instead of going downtown. Uh, bring it here so that the public can sit here and participate as well. Uh, not only um does that open the eyes through transparency, but that allows them to really understand exactly what the planning commission does and should be doing. So I do like that approach we talked about earlier.
Thank you.
We will implement that, and you should get a, um, give it about two weeks, you should get an updated sheet on all the trainings. Uh, we did go through and um this council uh reestablished uh folks' position uh so that the light is not red anymore in the system, it's green, and everybody is, is new and have their appointment times as well.
Roger that, thank you.
Thank you, um, Ms. Page?
Yeah, I was just gonna, um, thank you for bringing that idea um and implementing it. Um, it is interesting that the various trainings that are on there and the cases um that are presented through those outlets that are provided to us. Um, so I, I think that's a fabulous idea.
Thank you.
There's probably a lot of different topics that could pertain to our area.
Thank you, I just don't believe in wasting an opportunity to get the group together when we all could be learning and uh benefiting the place that we all live. And council is uh welcome to uh come sit in on those sessions as well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you, um, at this moment in time, I'll be looking um to move to the next item that is executive session, current to South Carolina code thirty dash four dash seventy, item A, to discuss, discussion of employment appointment and compensation of an interim town administrator and consultant for professional executive search, discussion and negotiation incident to proposed contractual agreement for same, receipt of legal advice related to same or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. I'll be looking for a motion to move to executive session.
So moved.
Motion made, looking for a second, second made, any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, and no, any nays, ayes have it, thank you, will move to executive session, followed by a five-minute recess. Aye, and no, any nays, ayes have it. Thank you. Will move to executive session, followed by a five-minute recess.
We, I got the thumbs up from the back. Alright, I'll be looking for motion to reconvene from executive session.
So moved.
Motion made, looking for a second.
Second.
Second made, any discussion? Here and done, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Ayes have it, we're back in regular session. To this council, are there any items requiring a vote following executive session?
No, Mr. Mayor.
No items requiring vote, I'll be looking for motion to adjourn.